Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's regular Board of Directors meeting. It's March 25th, the time is 5:31. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Director Bookenegger is going to read our land acknowledgement.
Thank you. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kowalski tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is to actually adopt tonight's agenda. I need to make two changes. We need to postpone item number eight, the Asset Preservation Program presentation, and item number 11, the Student Board Rep Report. Those both will come back on our agenda for April 18th. Unfortunately, yeah, April 15th, unfortunately, they were not able to be with us tonight. Entertain a motion?
I move adoption of tonight's agenda as amended.
Second?
Right, Director Perkins? Did you get that?
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is our performance. We'll go ahead and call forward Corinne Armston to introduce tonight's performance for us.
Do you want, what's, what's the name of your song?
We're playing Cerca del Mar. Cerca del mar, yo me enamoré. Y como la luna, la brisa y la esfuma también te besé. La noche azul, noche tropical comprendió mis penas y entre sus arenas yo pude soñar. El mar nos arrulló pensando que nuestro amor y al despertar de aquella ilusión un beso nos dimos y en el beso unimos tu amor y mi amor. El mar nos arrulló pensando que nuestro amor y al despertar de aquella ilusión un beso nos dimos y en el beso unimos tu amor y mi amor.
Do you have any questions for the group?
I do have a question. So, well, first of all, I want to say, the young man that was singing, you have a very powerful voice. Excellent job. And then, to all of you, so when you were introduced, it was that the group was formed this year. Does that mean, is this a class or is this like a group that you formed outside of all of your other band classes? Because you were-
It's outside of class, kind of like a club, I guess.
So all of you just got together and decided you are going to play this kind of music and get together, and that's awesome.
It was perfect with the weather today, so.
Thank you.
Amazing. You guys did a great job, and thank you for taking time out of your evening to join us. It was a great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I would like to know the name of the large instrument directly to your right.
This is called a guitaron.
Guitaron. Neat. And what was the song called again?
Cerca del mar.
Cerca de ma.
I mean, near the ocean.
Ah, okay. Oh, mar, okay. Beautiful. I just enjoy mariachi music so much. It's just some of the greatest music. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us, and happy March is music in your, in your, in the schools month. So we're excited to get to play during this month of March for music, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Corinne. Okay, next, am I on? Yep. Next on our agenda is public comments. Seeing that we have none signed up, we will go ahead and move on to the next item, our Board Consent Agenda. Entertain a motion?
I move to approve the Board Consent Agenda.
Second?
We have first Director Bookenegger, second Director Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie? Next is the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
Go ahead, Gary.
Oh. I move adoption of the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Second?
Right, moved by Director Wilson, second by Director Perkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, sorry, we are moving through the agenda so fast, I need to catch up with myself. Actually, I'll just go up there. Okay, the Superintendent's Report, that's easier.
All right, good evening. I've been out in schools and at different events, activities, hosting several listening sessions over the last couple of weeks, and I'm involved in a wide variety of community outreach as well. I have scheduled for you tonight a very informative teaching, learning, and equity department presentation this evening. So for the Superintendent Report this evening, I'm going to share on three different topics regarding staffing, staying the course, and spring. Okay, notice I did the alliteration there with the s's. Okay. So staffing, we are in the season of spring, but if you're in education, particularly in administration, we commonly refer to it as the staffing season. Okay, the team in HR and in fiscal have been working very, very hard, and based on projected enrollments, we have now allocated staffing to all of our schools. I attended each of these three staffing meetings with principals as they received their numbers this week. Principals then go back to their teams and begin to think about how to create a master schedule based on allocated FTE or staffing with student choice, because students have had to choose courses that they're interested in taking. They have the must haves, and then they have their elective courses. This is very hard and complex work and takes hours and hours. I've been a principal myself for many, many years, and it is complex. It lasts not only through the spring, but sometimes looking at your master schedules and staffing will continue through the summer, and then even we have to make changes sometimes in the fall when more students show up or less students show up physically in our classrooms. So we monitor that very closely. I would like to especially thank Joy Helfrich and Jessica Howell from the Human Resource Department. They manage these incredibly complex staffing spreadsheets, and so I got a little glimpse into the world when I was at the staffing meetings the other day. But that is a humongous task, and they have to be so detailed and precise to make sure that the right staff person is assigned with the right certifications to the right courses, and we fulfill their requirement of their contract. So if they're a point two, or they're a point eight, or whatever that may be. And so there's lots of things that go into it, and I've only touched the very, very surface of it. Okay, for the second S, staying the course. If you've been watching the news lately, you may have heard about several executive orders and/or dear colleague letters that have been coming out of our federal administration lately. I am in constant communication with local superintendents, our local Education Service Department 112, and attend biweekly meetings with our state superintendent, Chris Reichdahl. In fact, on Friday, he came in person to the ESD 112 to speak and answer questions from the region superintendents here in southwest Washington. Here in Evergreen Public Schools, we will keep the main thing the main thing. We are going to follow our mission statement. Evergreen Public Schools removes inequities by supporting, affirming, and growing each student to prepare them for success while they are with us and after they graduate. We will also stay true to our core values that are listed in our strategic plan. The core values are equity, inclusion, and belonging, pursuing excellence through growth, building empowerment through learning, staying student-centered, and creating excellence through learning. Every child deserves to feel valued, seen, heard, and be provided with the supports and skills necessary for them to be successful in a post-secondary opportunity, and we will continue to do that in Evergreen Public Schools. And it will continue to keep the board apprised of things that may possibly impact or won't impact Evergreen Public Schools as we work our way through this season. So spring, the third S, has sprung. The sun is shining, as you can see from outside. Spring sports are in full swing, literally, that pun was intended, because we just had a huge multi-district, I think it was called Baseballarium Tournament, I hope I'm saying it correctly, this last weekend, managed by our own Assistant Director of Student Services, Jason Castro. I want to make sure I call him out. And my first pitch was rained out. I was supposed to do the first pitch with Dr. Heather Fowler, but there was so much rain, so they postponed it. So we'll get to do a first pitch at a different baseball game later on this season. As when spring, as springs, students tend to be full of lots of energy this time of year, and staff and administrators are working really, really, really hard to support our families and our students. In education, March is sometimes considered one of the longest months, so with spring break just around the corner, I'd like to encourage all of our staff to take some time to relax and rejuvenate over the next week. I would want them to continue to spend some times or find time to spend with friends and families, and maybe just take some time for themselves. When you're in education, finding balance between your professional and your personal life is hard, but is very, very important, because we enter education to take care of others, to serve students, to serve our community. And sometimes we put ourselves on the back burner. So I do want to make sure I acknowledge the hard work that our staff and administrators are doing on a daily basis and encourage them to take some time. So I wish each of you a very happy and relaxing spring break starting next week. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, next is a budget presentation from Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Jacobson.
Hi, good evening, everybody, and happy to be here tonight. All right, so I've prepared a financial report for you. We have a few different sections I'm going to talk about. First, I want to just give you an update on our annual audit report, and next, I'll talk about the 24-25 projections, so we can see where we're at this year. We're now halfway through the fiscal year. We go through August, and so February was our halfway cutoff mark, so it's a good time to assess and look at where we're at. I'm also going to talk about two different scenarios for '25-'26. So as we're sitting here with the state legislature out and a lot of things going on right now, I think it's, it's important we kind of weigh the different scenarios. And then I'll end up with just a slide on our federal funding, because I know there are a lot of questions out there about what, you know, how much do we receive and from where. So that's my plan here. Let's see. Just give you a few seconds to read this. So the state auditors, they are committed to examining our use of public resources to ensure there's no misuse or misappropriation, and they also evaluate whether we're, you know, sticking to our regulations and our EPS policies and procedures. So they come into Evergreen for about eight to 10 weeks every single year. We transmit all of our transactions to SAO. They take a couple of weeks to put together a risk assessment and decide what they're going to examine in detail. About mid-January, we had our entrance conference, and they were here for about eight weeks, and had our exit mid-March. So that just wrapped up about a week ago. I do want to mention, I've been at smaller districts, and districts like White Salmon, Hawkinson, the state auditors only come every other year, and they only come for one to two weeks. So we're fortunate, we get this eight to 10-week in-depth examination here at Evergreen because of our size. We're a very large district. So for '23-'24, these are the areas the auditors decided to examine in depth. ASP activities are always at the top of the list, because we have a lot of students and advisors and a lot of fundraising and cash handling, so they want to make sure they've all been appropriately trained and all our checks and balances are in place. So I'm happy to announce that a little over a week ago, we had our exit, and we had a clean audit with no findings or management letters to report. So since I've been in the CFO role for about three years, we have gone three years now with no findings or management letters. And I wanted to just call out my fiscal service team and our HR and payroll teams, because they have done just incredible work. They run really tight ships around here, and they make sure we have all the internal controls and checks and balances in place so that we can pass these with clean audits. So I also have listed where you can go on the SAO website to see the official audit reports. Those were just posted, I think, on Friday. So you can see any school districts, audit reports, city, county, they're, they're all out there. All right, so now on to the 24-25 financial status update. So far this year, we have been following right along with budget as planned, except we have had a couple major deviations from that budget, but otherwise, most all of our programs are proceeding as expected. These are the two real major deviations we're seeing from the budget. So we do see an increased enrollment, and that is primarily Running Start, dropout re-engagement, and at our Skill Center, Cascadia Tech Academy. So all of these programs are kind of their own cost centers, so these additional funds generated from enrollment really goes and stays in those programs. So for instance, Running Start, we have about 50 more FTE participating in Running Start than we budgeted for. So that's, I mean, that's fabulous. We've got, you know, we're serving more students here than expected. However, those funds will come through our state apportionment and then get sent off to Clark College to pay for those credits. So that's just a flow-through. It really doesn't help our bottom line. The second area is our special education. So as the district continues to decline in enrollment, we expected to see a decline in the number of students we would serve through our special education program, and that has not been the case. We've had an increased special education enrollment and, and needs increasing. And so we've been continually adding certificating classified staff throughout the year to address these needs. We have also contracted out for parent educators to try to fill those. We've been very aggressive about getting those, those sort of end classified staff in the classroom for that help. But that extra contract was, was about 1.5 million if those 30 spots were filled for the year. So we are seeing a lot of issues across the state with our special education programs. All of our neighboring districts are struggling. We know there is a large gap there from what the state funds to what, you know, the actual costs are of the, of the program. I also wanted to just mention at the bottom, because we have had a few questions about our food service spending. We have definitely a food service reserve set aside. It's about 3 million of our fund balance is specifically for, for food services. So those are funds generated from the USDA for that program, and they can only be spent on that program. So we have gone through and did an assessment. We're replacing freezers and stoves and ovens, and we also realized the Evergreen cafeteria really needed to be updated, so that is part of our spend-down plan for that reserve. So you'll see that as well. So for our projected revenue, I'm going to stay really top level and not get into the details here. We are following along with kind of what our projections were for budget. State support, you will see an additional about 4 million. So that's those additional Running Start funds, Cascadia Tech Academy, those enrollment, and some additional special education funding. So those higher enrollments drive more state support. So our budget was for 428 million. We're coming in about 425 million on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we anticipated spending about 432.8 million in the budget. However, we are going to be going over budget this year if our projections continue as they have been. It's primarily because of the increase in our enrollment for special education, the increased needs, the increased staffing there. You'll see a little blip in basic ed, but that's what I was referring to with Running Start, the additional funds coming in and going out to Clark College. So our other programs are, are tracking along with budget. We will need to come to the board for a budget extension in the next several months. So I know, I haven't done one of those in a while, so my director and I are working on that, but right now, we only have approval to spend 432.8, and it looks like we are going to be spending more. So how does this impact our overall fund balance? We anticipated having about a $4 million deficit this year. Because of these increased costs, we're going to actually incur about a $10 million deficit this year. So our ending fund balance is looking to be about 22 million when we get to the end of the year. Our board policy is that we keep our unrestricted fund balance portion at 5% of the previous year's expenditures. This looks like we will go down to about 4% this year. I did reach out to ESD 112 to ask, what do we need to do in order to, you know, we're, we will be in violation of our board policy, so what types of things do we need to do to make this okay? And he said that as long as we have a plan to build it back to the 5%, it is okay to miss it for a year or two. So, so that, that's part of the process. All right, so for '25-'26 projections, we expect FTE at 21, 5, 10. That's about 400 to 500 students less. So we're still in this enrollment decline. We know we'll have at least another year to two of enrollment decline according to our flow analytics projection. So my scenario one is, what does the projections look like if we don't receive any kind of additional state funding, and we make 5.2 million in reductions for '25-'26? And I do have a slide in a little bit that I'll go into more detail on what that 5.2 million in reductions looks like. Our scenario two is projections if we were to receive an additional 5 million in state funding, plus take on those reductions that I spoke of. So the reason I chose 5 million is because we've now received yesterday the Senate and House budgets that have come through for approval. If the Senate budget was to be enacted, we would receive about 10 to 12 million more dollars next year. If the House budget came through, it's more like $3 million next year. So we realize one is quite high, one is low, and we're hoping they will collaborate and meet in the middle. I feel like 5 million is a very conservative estimate for that, and so I, I thought it was important we take that into account when we look at future years. So my first scenario is if we receive no additional state funding, we would be looking at a $5 million deficit next year. It would bring our fund balance down to 16.7 million, and that would bring our unrestricted fund balance down to 2.7%. So if there was no additional state funding, we would be looking at some, another year of large budget cuts going into '26-'27, trying to get that back up to the 5%. So what does the scenario look like with the additional state? Am I going too fast? Okay. With the additional state funding, with five more million dollars, we would have basically a balanced budget for next year. We would still be down at the 3.9% fund balance, but now we're starting to get our feet back under us and on the ground. And I think one thing I need to stress is that our full levy amount isn't coming into play quite yet. So for '25-'26, our 20-25 numbers are still the old levy amounts. We're only capturing those new levy amounts for the spring of '26. As we go forward into '26-'27, we will receive the full levy amounts. So I went ahead and projected one more year out for '26-'27, and with bringing in those additional dollars through levy, and with the 5 million in additional state funding, we would be able to work our way back up to the 5% projected fund balance. So any questions at this point? I've been covering a lot, giving a lot of detail here, so. So I want to give a little more detail on that 5.2 million dollars we're talking about for '25-'26. That's kind of what I'm recommending we do, because it's, I think it's a nice balance, because we're still in declining enrollment. We know we can't just keep status quo. We still have to be looking at reductions. We already have a reduction of our teaching staff of about $2 million. So we know next year's enrollment's down. We're fortunate, we're not going to have to riff at all this year. We have enough retirements and movements and people leaving that we can just take that reduction through that format. We are also implementing a zero-based budget process for all of our departments. I think I did this over at Vancouver. It was very helpful, and so I thought we would try it here. We're going to be meeting with all departments, and we are going to start at zero, and we are going to look at what is essential to reach the goals of your department, and what are the wants, what are the needs. And it really is helpful to think of it in a different mindset and find new efficiencies. You can find things across departments. And so I, this is, we also are aligning this with the strategic plan. How do these resources support our strategic plan? So this is the first steps we have in trying to align resources with that. So I, I'm hopeful that we'll find some efficiencies that way. We're, of course, going to continue to examine all our contracts like we have been for the last couple of years. We're looking at the ABM contract. We're looking at, you know, those that depend on our student FTE should be reducing, because our student FTE is reducing. So we have, you know, we like to negotiate those different prices for contracts. And then we're going to continue to proceed with an in-depth special education review, recommendations, and monitoring. So our sped team now is just doing a fabulous job of digging in and looking at where the staffing is, the needs are, and trying to get a good lay of the land so that we can kind of start getting special ed under, I don't want to say under control, but making sure we're meeting the needs of all of our students and in the best way possible. So I feel like we've already had a couple positions here at ASC that we're not planning to replace, or we're trying to distribute jobs, you know, loads a little differently to help let up some of this 5.2 million. We have some other things, like we froze curriculum for a year. That was about a million dollars. So we have some other things we can do while we wait for the state to figure out how much money they're going to, to allocate to us next year. I think we have just, I've never built a budget where I'm waiting for, to see where state funding is before, but I really feel like we've just been through so much in these last three years of reductions that I think it's important that we hold off for now and see where we might land before we keep going deeper and deeper. So that, that's my, my feeling about it, is it's, it's been pretty rough these last few years. So we'll just put a hold on it for now. We'll see how the state comes out, and then we'll have to reassess for the following year. I did just this one slide on our federal funds. There's a lot of talk about whether the Department of Education's going- There's a lot of talk about whether the Department of Education's going to be reduced or eliminated. Right now, our total federal funds this year are about $23.7 million. So that's about 5.6% of our total revenue. A big bulk of that is for our Child Nutrition Services Program. About 9 million comes through federal USDA funds. So those are separate from the Department of Education and we're hopeful that those will continue so that we can feed all students breakfast and lunch. It's a fabulous program. Special education, we have about 5 million that comes through that safety net and through some other IDA funds. And that does go through the Department of Education. And then our title funds, this year we're receiving about 8.4 million in revenue through title. So these are areas we're, you know, keeping an eye out and trying to be very diligent and careful in our spending and planning of these funds. So my last slide, one you've seen before, is from Flow Analytics when they did their enrollment forecast. So I think it's important to back up and look at the big picture and look at the enrollment decline we have experienced and the reason that, including inflation, why we've been in budget reductions for the last several years. In '23, '24, they gave us this forecast for 10 years. Their black line is really kind of their probable line for what they think enrollment's going to look like. The red line is their, you know, optimistic expectations. And then the blue is their low forecast. And so for this first year, we are right above that black line just a little bit. So it's coming in pretty good. We do see there's a couple more years of about 400, 200 reduction and then things should start evening out. So we had some really low birth rate during COVID and that's kind of reflected in our kindergarten classes coming in. But then we see birth rate starting to go up again. So we are hopeful that we'll kind of plateau and have some stability and get out of this, you know, reduction cycle that we've been in for so long. All right, that was a lot of information. So do you have questions or comments or?
On the title funds from the federal government, which one of the titles is the largest amount? Is it Title I?
Title I, yeah, I believe it's about 6 million.
Okay, what are the other titles for? Do you know?
Title II is learning assistance and it's often spent on professional development. I think that's a couple million. I know Title III also funds some people up in our dual-language department. Title IV funds some people in our security department. So there are a lot of, lot of funds.
You said 6 million for Title I?
Yes. Yeah, that's the bulk of our funding.
And then the 5 million for special education, is that connected almost entirely to the safety net?
No, there's a portion that's the IDA funding. And then safety net, this year we're expecting somewhere between 2.7 million to 3 million. It depends, we won't find out till August.
Yeah, I knew that part. Okay. And then the last question has more to do with the financial statement. But can I ask you that now instead of later?
Sure.
Okay. On the financial statement for February, the 8,000 series of revenues is other agencies and associations and it's coming in at 231%, 232% over budget? What's the one?
I can pull that up. So.
Could you talk about what other agencies and associates means? Who are they?
So I believe that is when we provide services to students from other districts through, I think, Hollingsworth, some of our other types of programs. And then we bill them and they reimburse us. So I believe that's for those funds.
Now, is that reflective of the much higher need for special education?
Yes.
I know it's not a great game changer in terms of revenue. Is it just passed through?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to understand that a little better. Thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, we're halfway through now. And if you, I notice if you look at our actual for the year down the line, we're right in line with budget if you just double those expenses until you get to the special ed.
Yeah.
A total of 38 million. So that was unanticipated and we're going to have to figure that out.
Sure will.
I just have a couple of comments. Congratulations on another fantastic audit.
Thank you.
It's really amazing for you and like all the people that work in that area because I know that, I wasn't involved in the process this year, but I know that in the years past that the auditors have always complimented our crew on how well and how cooperative we are while they're here. So thank you for that because a large district like us, it's not easy to get perfect audits and that's something to be really proud of. The second thing I was going to comment on was the zero-down budget approach. I think that's what you called it, zero?
Zero-based budget.
Zero-based.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea because then it really has everybody in the system looking at like their areas and what they can, what they absolutely need and what they can maybe do without.
Yeah.
And so I think it's a great approach as we look at.
In the past, we've always used status quo. You get what you got last year and then we look at, you know, we might ask for you to all take 5% reductions or things like that. But this is a new approach, new way to look at things.
I think it's a great idea.
Kind of opens up some creative thinking and working together.
I agree.
On the fund balance, is there a threshold where if we go below that, then it could have a negative effect on like credit rating or? I can't think of the exact term I'm looking for, but.
Bond rating? I think the bond rating rate is that.
Right, we did have a downgrade in our bond rating a few years back. A lot of districts did across the state. I don't anticipate that being an issue for us. We aren't going to be issuing bonds for a fairly long time now. So I don't think that'll affect. Probably my only concern about the finance, or the fund balance is the cash flow implications in those months when the revenue is quite low. We will have to keep an eye on that and there could be a brief time where we have to do an inter-fund loan from our capital projects fund to cover. So.
I know you mentioned it was a month or two ago that the state usually catches up at the end, like July and August.
In fact, I saw that in a bill that's gone forward today is right now they have 22.5% is allocated in July and August. They're talking about now moving it up to 25% in July and August. So they're even trying to push more of our allocation into next fiscal year for some savings at the state level. So it's going to cause more cash flow problems for districts.
I have one more comment. I was going to say that in kind of response to Gary's question about the fund balance, I appreciate that you showed us kind of the projections the next two years out. So even if we have to go that low for the one year, that it shows us how we'll recover within a couple of school years.
Yeah.
Especially based on the amount we'll collect for the levy.
Yes.
Next year. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and we do need a plan in place. So we'll have to develop that and.
Especially with the uncertainty.
Yeah.
Of funding for us.
Yeah.
A little scary.
Yeah, it'd be, you know, the federal funds aren't for sure thing, at least going out into '26, '27. So something to keep in mind as well.
You're conservatively estimating about 5 million additional funds? And do we know, would that be, would know the actual amount the end of April?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Towards the end of the legislative session?
Yeah. So I'm hopeful it could be higher. We'll keep our fingers crossed, do as much advocacy as we can now. So, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is a teaching and learning and equity update. And we're going to get that from Chief Academic Officer Brian Fox.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, members of the board. It's great to be here again for the teaching, learning, and equity update. This evening, we have three topics, all supporting an equity-based MTSS, which is what I spoke about quite a bit two weeks ago. That will include guaranteed and viable curriculum audit, anti-bias and anti-hate modules, and family engagement report. But first, can we talk about those student musicians, please?
Yes.
And you asked some great questions of the performers. I thought I'd provide a little bit more detail for you. The Mariachi Ensemble, whose name I didn't write down, I just wrote down Mariachi Ensemble. I'll have to get that from them tomorrow. At Mountain View High School is a brand-new ensemble which just started this year. It's a student-led group and they created the group, recruited the students for each part, and have scheduled weekly rehearsals after school. They do receive support and direction from their band and orchestra directors, Mark Claussen and Sam Ormsen. These students have been fortunate enough to collaborate with local mariachi musicians, nurturing connections within our own community. This is the first mariachi ensemble to compete in regional solo and ensemble competitions. And recently, they received a high enough score to qualify for state competition. We're so pleased to see this group of students find such joy and success in learning and performing together. And speaking of the regional solo and ensemble competition, Evergreen students have won 31 of the 43 categories. That means they took first place in 31 of the 43 categories for our region. These students will represent the Lower Columbia Region at the WIAA State Solo and Ensemble Contest in Ellensburg on April 25th and 26th, something for our students and our staff to be quite proud of. At your last board meeting, I shared this graphic from the OSPI website representing the five components of a multi-tiered support system. The state is committed to the implementation of MTSS as the approach for aligning our systems and priorities to tackle persistent opportunity gaps. As shown using the five icons in this graphic, MTSS is a framework for enhancing the adaption, the adoption and implementation of a continuum of evidence-based practices to achieve important outcomes for every student. MTSS involves team-based leadership, continuous data-based decision-making, student, family, and community engagement, and the delivery of a continuum of evidence-based instruction and support. Previously, I detailed the continuum of support using this graphic and defined each tier as noted on the screen. Tier one is the foundation for additional layers of support. In tier one instruction, every student has equitable access to universal instruction and supports that are culturally and linguistically responsive and differentiated to meet their unique needs. Tier one in instruction is where our guaranteed and viable curriculum, or GVC, lives. Our GVC is a structured framework that ensures all students have equitable access to essential knowledge and skills regardless of their background or school setting. It includes a clearly-defined scope and sequence outlining what is taught and the order and timing in which it is taught. It is important that the GVC is implemented with fidelity. And this evening, Executive Director of Instruction and Leadership Bobby Height, along with Director of Curriculum and Instruction Tilly Meyer, will share evidence of GVC implementation across the district's 22 elementary schools. Remember that the continuum of supports is not always academic-focused. The support could be related to behavior. And the MTSS model moves away from treating academics and behaviors as separate areas, instead offering a tiered approach to all interventions. And for this reason, I've also asked Director of Student Equity and Family Engagement, Dr. Jamila Singleton, to share about teaching modules recently rolled out to all school administrators focused on how to respond to bias and hate. This work also lives in tier one instruction and across all the tiers of instruction because it is the responsibility of us all to interrupt hate and bias and harmful language. You can see that much of this evening's TLE update will focus on the continuum of support component of MTSS. However, since family, student, and community engagement is one of the five components of an equity-based, multi-tiered system of support, I've asked Dr. Singleton to share about the efforts of our EPS Family Engagement Pillar Advisory. Through the United States Department of Education, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act provides financial assistance to local school districts to improve education programs. To meet the requirements of what is known as Title I Part A, we must identify strategies for building capacity, coordinating programs, and providing meaningful opportunities for families, and remove barriers their children and other children experience. Dr. Singleton's presentation will focus on ways we train all school staff on effective parent engagement and how we are developing systems for communicating in an accessible manner to families. So let's begin with the GVC walks and the audit and I'll ask Bobby and Tilly to come forward.
Good evening, Board of Directors. As Dr. Fox mentioned, we're here tonight to share the important work happening in our elementary schools to ensure we are delivering a guaranteed student experience for every child. Whoa, geez, touchy. Hold on, don't look. Okay. This is the second year of our elementary guaranteed and viable curriculum, or GVC, audit. To better understand curriculum and instructional practices across our classrooms, we sent two of our amazing curriculum instruction specialists. Leanne over here is our literacy specialist and Marlena over here is our math specialist. They went out to every elementary classroom in Evergreen Public Schools. Together, they visited over 660 classrooms, spending more than 280 hours observing instruction and an additional 130 hours analyzing and compiling school-level data. The findings from each visit were then shared through detailed debrief sessions with the school administrators and either myself or Alex and Griffin joined those meetings as well. Tonight, we'd like to take a few minutes to share the results of this year's GVC audit, highlight the progress we've made, and outline our direction moving forward. So Tilly Meyer, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will walk us through the findings. Thank you.
Good evening. Let me move this forward. Okay, so the classroom observations consisted of numerous student and teacher indicators that resulted in an overall placement on this scale. Solidifying, as you see here in green, is where we want all of our teachers to be as it is the foundation for our MTSS tier-one system. The data comes from our most recent GVC audit and literacy implementation. It highlights not only percentages, but also the number of classrooms and students. A number of classrooms were not included in the audit due to factors such as substitute teachers, assemblies, counselor lessons, assessments, and other scheduling conflicts. This side-by-side comparison in literacy shows just how much progress we've made from last year to this year. It's really exciting to see more green on the chart, meaning more classrooms are solidifying their practices. With an average literacy improvement of 15%, it's evident that last year's data had a meaningful impact as schools refined their implementation and strengthened literacy instruction across our system. The percentage of growth towards solidifying per school is calculated using the 2320. is calculated using the 2324 and 2425 data to compare. It provides a clearer indicator of instructional alignment and growth than the bar graph alone. Turning to math, this data, just like what was shared for literacy, also includes percentages, the number of classrooms observed, and the total number of students represented. In this math data comparison, you'll notice a significant increase in green within the solidifying category, a positive trend worth celebrating. On average, math improved by 7.8%, demonstrating that last year's data directly informed efforts to strengthen classroom support with a targeted focus on implementing effective math practices. So here is a closer look at the elementary math progress across all schools. This side-by-side comparison of math and reading focuses on pacing. This is not just about following district's scope and sequence, but also the daily pacing of teaching and learning. Both reading and math curricula offer ample opportunities for student thinking so that teachers know how to respond to student needs, as well as see evidence of progress over time. Now, looking ahead to 2025-26. Last week, we had the opportunity to share this data with our elementary leaders. We want to recognize the incredible work of our principals, coaches, language specialists, teachers, and staff, and what they're doing every day to strengthen instruction and positively impact student outcomes. Across the district, teams are focused on providing equitable access to high-quality learning for all students. This collective effort is vital to creating a rigorous-aligned student experience that fosters academic growth, regardless of classroom or campus. Working together as a system remains key to our progress, and we're excited to continue this work into the 2025-26 school year. Thank you. And now, we are going to transition to Dr. Singleton. I get to say that.
Thank you, Tilly.
All right. Well, good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. My name is Dr. Jamila Singleton. You might notice a little bit of a shift. I got to shift towards being a doctor in February, so I'm excited about that. But I'll be sharing updates on our strategic efforts related to anti-bias education and how we are developing the Family and Community Engagement Pillar for our strategic plan. So first, I just want to start with a two-year roadmap. And we're starting with expectations around anti-bias education to ensure that we can really establish a supportive and inclusive environment with more consistency across all 38 schools. We are using the Speak Up at School strategies. I just handed those to you in front of you. And these strategies are used to help interrupt bias, and we're using them to train administrators on how to facilitate and monitor how to interrupt. And then also, we're doing trainings around restorative conversations. So over the next two years, we will launch additional anti-bias lessons in K-12 classrooms, and we'll offer funding for continued professional development with courageous conversations. And we're hopeful that with a comprehensive strategy, we'll be able to develop the culture of safety and belonging we aspire for in our strategic plan. So to sustain this work, we will need all staff to interrupt bias. Here is an overview of current anti-bias training modules. Our August 2025 Equity PD Day will reinforce these practices. We're also increasing the number of staff certified in courageous conversations about race and establishing a cohort of experts in restorative practices. Shout-out to Casey Lyons and Shannon Chambora for their efforts in seeking input and designing these staff modules. So what is biased language? So our Module One focus addresses biased language. And this is a foundational piece of our work to make sure that our staff and students recognize what biased language is. And so when we talk about this, we're talking about words or phrases that disparage or demean a group of people, reinforce stereotypes, and marginalize individuals based on race, gender, ethnicity, religion, or other identity factors. Addressing biased language starts with awareness, and we are committed to creating environments where students feel, and staff, feel empowered to challenge it. So as you can see, the four strategies here, which are on your cards in front of you, are strategies that we can use consistently across our 38 schools: interrupt, question, educate, and echo. The goal is to stop harmful language in the moment, encourage reflection, build awareness, and reinforce positive interventions. These strategies will be embedded in our training and resources for educators over the next two years. In addition, restorative practices are also central to this approach. When addressing incidents of bias, we focus on dignity, learning, reflection, and accountability. It's critical that students understand the impact of their words and actions while also having a path to repair harm. As one of our counselor toses has said, Jessica Greenwell, "Without repair, these issues don't get better, and students are less likely to report or corroborate incidents in the future." Our commitment to these anti-bias efforts and restorative practices is not just about addressing incidents. It's about fostering a culture where every student feels valued and supported. This aligns directly with our district's strategic vision of belonging and academic success, where students are seen, heard, and empowered. But to truly create lasting change, we also must extend these efforts beyond the classroom and into our partnerships with families and the community. Just as we focus on safety and belonging with our schools, we must also ensure that our family engagement structures reflect the same values. That's why our next focus is on how to strengthen family and community engagement. So our family and community promise is a pillar to our strategic plan, and we're using this to really ground the work that we're doing in the Family Engagement Advisory. First, we started by doing a needs assessment. So on the left side, you can see the results of that assessment. And we're working with the technical assistance. We're working to get technical assistance from the Washington Family Engagement Center to support our improvement efforts. So OSPI as well guides us to do this in ways that center the voices of the historically marginalized, foster collaboration, build trust, and innovate. So this is the context that led us into our work as well as taking an anti-bias approach. We want to make sure that we're braiding this anti-bias approach into family engagement strategy to ensure that our families also feel valued and included and that we address historical marginalization. This includes equipping staff with tools to recognize bias, ensuring that multilingual and culturally-responsive communication occurs, and making sure that we're analyzing engagement data to identify gaps and implement accountability measures to address concerns. So our two-year roadmap starts by building upon the community promise by setting standards of practice of what meaningful family engagement looks like. To support this, we also intend to conduct walkthroughs and provide checklists to our school leaders so that we can provide them with targeted feedback to strengthen their school and even our district engagement plans. We'll also be developing a catalog of workshops and resources to support our parents and caregivers and staff professional development. This ensures that our engagement efforts are sustainable and effective at both the school and district levels. So the family advisory, the Family Engagement Advisory... Sorry, the Family Engagement Pillar Advisory. I'm messing up. There are so many words. I need to figure out the acronym for that. But the advisory group is meeting to build upon each of... So we're meeting each time to build upon what we've started. And so the standards of practice are where we began, and we are doing this to make meaningful improvements with the input of over 40 people at each of the meetings, including around 18 to 20 multilingual families. In summary, we are expanding family engagement opportunities to be more flexible and inclusive of diverse cultural norms and accessibility needs. For example, when we take a more culturally-responsive approach to two-way communication, we go beyond simply informing families to truly connecting with families. And so this requires deepened trust and building upon shared responsibility so that we can support the success of students. In summary, we're committed to strengthening our anti-bias initiatives, improving family engagement structures, and building capacity across the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Because we've taken a lot of time tonight, but this is important stuff. Our hope is that this evening's TLE update has helped make some connections between the MTSS structure and some of the specific work being done in EPS to support student achievement. At your next meeting, we'll take a closer look at the Tier Three support at the top of the pyramid, intensive interventions which are very individualized to meet student needs. So the focus will be on special education. Director of Special Services, Dr. Matt Bennett, and I will provide a summary of the findings and the recommendations from the WASSA review of EPS Special Services. And Dr. Matt Bennett will join me for a presentation on inclusion and some specific areas of focus within the Special Services Department. In addition, we're going to be able to highlight the Evergreen School District Foundation. And so we'll have Foundation President Jason Huggins here as a guest, and that's on April 15th. Do you have any questions or comments for any of the presenters of the TLE update?
I was wondering, can we get a copy of this sent to us? The slides?
Absolutely. Is it in the agenda as a PDF? Yeah, very good.
Thank you. There was a lot of information there. I'll have to form my questions later.
It might be why you want the copy of slides for yourself, so...
This is tremendous to me. Thank you so much for giving us a copy of this.
Yes, thank you, Dr. J.
Dr. J. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Next on our agenda is our Good News Report. Executive Director of Communications, Craig Bernbach, will bring that for us.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Superintendent Maloney. Thank you, as always, for letting me present the good news, and we do have plenty of it. I'm going to start with community-building events. Heritage High School hosted their second annual Noche de Ciencias. Sorry for the pronunciation. This science night was full of fun STEM activities. What they do is they specifically invite their feeder elementary school students to come to this event. We went as a communications team. Aaron Winterston went and took a bunch of great pictures. And they also had some great pictures taken at Heritage. And Heritage sent us this awesome video that somebody put together. It's only about a minute or so, so I encourage everyone to watch it. And I want to make sure we give credit that we did not do that. The school did that. Henrietta Lacks High School had an annual culture fair, and they celebrated the diversity of its community, and it featured some amazing things. There was traditional clothing, there was music, there was dance, and something I've never seen at one of our culture events, and that was fencing, Scottish fencing. No one was harmed. It was a demonstration, but as you could see, very, very cool. These events are just growing, and we see just awesome cultural representations. Board of Director Gronwald mentioned this, that Dr. Maloney and Director Gronwald were a judge at the Chartwell's Discovery Kitchen Cook-Off, our partner, great partner, Chartwell's puts these together. It's elementary school students. They go, and basically, it's Top Chef for elementary school kids. So that has continued. They were able to use the wonderful kitchen at Y East and have just wonderful facilities and great partnerships and help as they cook some wonderful meals. Awesome event at Columbia Valley Elementary School. It really concentrated on reading, but it also had games. And the celebrities there are the Union Football Team. So the Union Football Team comes and spends the night. And I don't sleep over. I want to make sure. They did have tents, but they leave. But they play games with them, and they read with them. And I talked to the associate principal the next day, and she said it was just an amazing event. The kids obviously love it. And the Union High School Football Team, they feel like Super Bowl champs there with how the elementary school students treat them. Unified basketball has continued throughout our district, but Pacific and Chehalis Middle School had their game and where they played against each other. So they've had events where the Pacifics had an event for unified basketball, and Chehalis had an event for unified basketball. But at their schools with their students, they brought it together and played an actual game. So that's wonderful. Some recognitions. I want to mention Nancy Brown was huge surprise at Pioneer Elementary School, and President Weatherspoon was present. And it was kind of funny because there were people in the lobby, including President Weatherspoon, who knows Nancy Brown, the counselor. And she walked by and she said, you know, "Hi, Jackie." And this is given out by the foundation. And I told the foundation president, Jason, like, "Yeah, that's who we're giving it to." He's like, "Oh, no." I'm like, "She still doesn't know." Dr. Maloney was also there. It was a wonderful surprise. You could see from this picture. It was funny. She went to the side of the room. She had no idea that this was about her. And like, you could see her face starting to realize, "Oh, this is about me." And then someone helped push her closer to everyone. It was a huge crowd from the foundation, Dr. Maloney, Board President Weatherspoon there. This will be honored at the gala, the Foundation Gala, which is this Saturday. Hila High School had two seniors that were finalists for the Marshall Awards. And while they didn't win the award, I will say there were six finalists, and two came from Hila. So I think that's something really to focus and celebrate. Alap Armour and Raquel Nelson were the finalists. And then we ended with Read Across America. This year was a new partner, Read Northwest. As everyone knows, Beaches, they retired, closed their restaurant. Read Northwest had the guidance, though, of the Beaches owners and many of the same volunteers. So as a person that went to almost all these schools, I will say it was seamless. The exact, almost the exact same experience. There were now Read Northwest volunteers, added some music, you know, some dance. It was really great. So there's about 220 pictures to look at here from all 22 schools. But it was really nice. And I do want to mention Wellpoint Washington, who works with our foundation as the book sponsor because every first grader also gets a book to take home. We went with a local canvas bookstore this year called Bookish, and the books were phenomenal. We got really good feedback on the books being really of high quality. So that's my presentation, if there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. The next item on our agenda is for information-only purposes, our February financial statements. Jennifer kind of covered all that earlier. Next is board comments. Comments open for the board?
I just enjoyed the family engagement event last night and had a good elbow partner. And then today, visiting Riverview Elementary, it was really a special time. I really got a great feel for the... How well the staff and the students just relate to each... each other, and there's, I would say, a lot of love there. I mean, and the kids are so well behaved. I mean, we got hugs, and it was special, so they're doing a good job there.
I, since we're not having a workshop today, I was asked to do a short legislative update. Maybe you can help along with that, with any information you have. And I'm drawing this primarily from the in-session newsletter that WASDA publishes, which any of us can subscribe to. And I have to apparently get it back out. Bear with me for that second. There. Okay, here it is. We know, the way that Jennifer was talking about the Senate and the House budgets having been released now, it's worth noting that both of the budgets contemplate additional taxes, but the form of that is not clear. There are lots of suggestions on the board, and as you, as I'm sure you know, watching legislatures, who knows what will happen? It'll be a compromise in any case. I'd make you aware of the two bills that are part of our priorities. One is the Materials and Operating Costs Bill, MSOC, number 5192, which had a hearing with some testimony by WASDA leaders in the Appropriations Committee, House Appropriations, this previous Wednesday, as well as 5263 for special education. And there's some notes in that newsletter about inviting us to watch how they did that testimony and who did it. It was mostly officers, right? Of WASDA who coordinated their testimony in strong support of both of those bills. So folks up there pretty much know that WASDA and the directors around the state are behind those two proposals. Let's see. Yeah, budgets, okay, budgets came out. This newsletter came out Sunday, so I'm kind of skipping the parts that I don't have to talk about. But I think it's, I think that's the basic thing, is that the two bills, 5192 and 5263 are in motion. 5263 was scaled back, I think I talked about that last time, it was scaled back from the original proposals, which would have almost entirely funded special education for us, and relieved a lot of worries. So the compromises and the adjustments and the adaptations to the revenue forecasts are definitely in progress. But I feel confident that the passage of those bills would cause us to land in between those two extremes of funding increase that Jennifer was talking about. I'd asked before, they're working on their budgets. Those two numbers are 5167 for the Senate budget and 1197 for the House budget. And there are hearings open, or there were hearings open, they took place today shortly before we convened. So those are the four bills that are worth watching. Meantime, there's a lot of uncertainty about what's going on and what will happen at the federal level, and some talk about that. So it was good, for my part, to hear about the amounts for the federal contributions to our revenues. They're, that are, they're actually smaller than I thought we could stand to lose. But there's too much uncertainty to know what's going to happen. And I don't really have anything else to say about that. Do you have anything to add?
Microphone. You did a great job, Director Perkins, with all of that. Yeah, we'll just continue to watch. Like I said, we're going to continue the course and focusing on educating our students, and we're being very cautious when we look at federal grants or applying for grants. What are the requirements around those grants? And just want to make sure that they don't conflict with our values and what we stand for as a district.
Excellent. I'll repeat my gratitude for this kind of work, because I remember in my board comments one time, the last time or the time before, talking about this needing to happen. And I'm so glad to see that folks were working on that in the moment that I was kind of expressing what I felt was a community ask and a real need out there. So that, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Do you have anything, Julie?
Just wanted to say thank you to Gary and Rob and Dr. Maloney for attending the Region Six meeting last week. I thought it was really well attended. It was kind of nice to be able to collaborate with some of our fellow directors from across the region. The meeting topic was leading with purpose, and so I thought it was really well done.
I was, sorry to miss that, but unfortunately, my college students home for spring break, and I had to go pick them up. The only thing I have, actually, it's a great thing, in addition to Craig's presentation, we actually had the Cook-Off finals last Wednesday. So I was able to attend the finals, and we, I guess, chef-crowned the winner, and that was a great experience to be able to watch the students compete and cook and see all the skills they learned. And at last week's, the final competition, we actually had two students from Cascadia Tech there as judges, from the culinary portion of Cascadia Tech. So it was great to watch the students judge the students, and they were, the older students were great in giving suggestions and getting them all hyped up. So that was a great experience, and actually, the finals were at Frontier Middle School, so we were able to use the Frontier Kitchen as well.
What was the winning dish?
Oh, it was, sorry, I had to think about that. She made homemade noodles, fettuccine noodles, and made like a fettuccine alfredo from scratch. She rolled the dough, she cut the noodles, and yeah. So it was impressive. I can't do that, but I'm not a cook, though, either. So it was very impressive. And that's, those were our fifth graders. Yeah, so it was, I mean, like, it's our fifth graders. You got a nice career ahead of them if they so choose.
I remembered I had one more thing to add, and that's how thrilled I am and how happy I feel to see the Spanish language surfaced twice in this meeting. The mariachi group was just so inspiring, and it makes me wonder whether there are small groups or ensembles that could be offered to perform at the WASDA conference. I'm sure that we'd have some takers. There are a lot of really good musicians in this system, and not a lot of knowledge statewide about just how good they are.
Well, this year's conference, they choose from a West Side school to perform, because we're in Seattle.
You could get the timetable for that and encourage them.
May know somebody's on the WASDA board.
Yeah, somebody might have. The conference planning committee does not decide on the music. Sorry, I can't help it.
I would love to have students from our district perform at WASDA. So if we can make that happen, and we're in Seattle this year, so it'd be much easier.
It'll be worth the expense.
It was 31 of 43 competitions we.
Yeah. I mean, they know it among each other, but really bringing them forward to the state at that level.
Maybe I'll send a quick email up to the person that took over for Tricia doing the conference planning. Just ask her what the process is.
Yeah.
And we can put our, you know, naming the hat there.
And thank you, Julie, for facilitating the Area Six meeting, so it was good.
Sorry, I forgot, I'm leaving this. I can't just put everything away. All right, with that, it is 6:50, and I'm calling this meeting adjourned.